I hereby call the Monday, April 8th, 2024 Cumberland Town Council meeting to order. A few items of business here before we get started. We had a budget workshop this evening from 5:00 until about 6:40, where we had some good discussion about combing through the budget and trying to identify any additional areas that we could maybe cut out and also just look at different programs that are also producing revenue to offset some of those additional costs. And we have, again, another budget workshop on the 29th. So the April 22nd meeting is going to be moving to the 29th in observance of Passover. So our next budget workshop is going to be on the 29th as well at 5:00 PM before that meeting. That brings us to our regular 7 o'clock meeting. And the first item of business is the approval of the minutes. And that was, those were the minutes from March 25th of 2024. Any questions or comments on those minutes?
Move to adopt.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
And we have a second. Any additional questions, comments, concerns, thoughts?
I would say that Brenda mitigated my comments a little bit, but it was okay.
Okay. Well, then I will go ahead and call for a vote. All those in favor of adopting those. Appears to be unanimous. Okay, thank you. Next, we have manager's report. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am going to ask Megan Lichter, our school board rep, if she would come up the mic and give you an update. She's here tonight, and we're very happy to have her.
I am happy to be here. Thanks for having me. I'm Megan Lichter, Cumberland School Board member. And I'm here to give you an update on what we've been doing in the school board lately. And it's all about the new school project. So in March, the board voted to move forward with an on-campus option for addressing the overcrowding issues. Some of this will be familiar to you from our joint meeting, but I'll just recap briefly. If you recall, we had two options for a new school project, Eighty Gray Road and the on-campus option. And Eighty Gray, though it had its merits, had expanded in cost to almost 80 million before we had whittled down some of the ask. It had other drawbacks, but the main concern that we heard from both communities was the cost. In contrast, the on-campus option was, has proved to be in our planning not only less expensive, but provides for a comprehensive project to address overcrowding, traffic, building upgrades, playing fields, and cost. And so the board voted to move forward with this option, and I'll just recap a little bit. Regarding overcrowding, the new school will accommodate pre-K to one, and with the movement of those students to their new building, other students will be shuffled, and we will be able to remove all portables and reclaim all that space, which will be reverted back to play space for the kids at the middle school in Mabel I. Wilson, which I think is a very welcome thing to many parents. The new school project accounts for population growth, and with enrollment projections, we think that it will meet needs for a decade or more on the entire campus for all of the grades. Regarding traffic, built into the one-campus plan is a rework of traffic flow on much of the campus. And if you've been on or near campus at pickup or drop-off time, that is a huge need. The plan adds parking, reworks traffic on campus, and provides for widening of both main and tunnel to ease congestion into and out of the school. Regarding building upgrades, Mabel I. Wilson will give up pre-K but gain fourth, and the building's not suited for this change yet. But the plan accounts for upgrades and the addition of four new classrooms to, again, address needs for years to come, because the last thing that we want to do is build a short-sighted project. The maintenance building, which the Cumberland Historical Society, thanks, I think in part to you, pointed out to us is an important historic building, will sadly not remain as it is in its place. However, we met with members of the Historical Society who shared their concerns that the building be remembered and honored, and we heard that. And what we plan to do is take a piece of the old building or a part of it, whatever we can, and put it into the new project with a plaque, so that it will be remembered. And we thank the Historical Society for being part of this. It was a really nice, actually productive, meeting. Regarding the turf field, which is a conscientious or is a contentious issue. Over the last few months, student athletes, parents, coaches, and the school's athletic director illustrated for us how badly an alternative to the current playing field is needed. For example, the current use of Hutchins Field by all sports teams over the playable months totals 162 hours in a good year. Dave Shapiro, who's the athletic director, estimates that a turf field, which could be used by all sports teams and PE and the community for nine-plus months, would give over 1,600 hours of playtime. So 162 hours becomes 1,600 hours, which is huge. Hutchins Field is grossly underused because of the variability of the playing surface, and there are several injuries that have been reported because of the variability of the playing surface. We heard from several student athletes about the need to drive, usually at night, to use a turf facility in Portland or even Augusta. And, for example, Junior this year told me that he had turf time with his team from 9:00 to 10:30 in Portland at the MAC, which is on Riverside. So he said, "Yeah, I usually get home close to 11:00." So a bunch of maybe 15, but 16, 17, 18-year-olds driving multiple times per week, I think is what really pushed the needle for many of us on the school board, that we have to do something different than what we have and what we've had for years. So that is why we included it in the project. And lastly, cost. This project is a reduction of almost 25 million from the Eighty Gray Road option. And again, addresses a number of long-term issues to set us up for success for at least, we estimate, the next decade. We heard from our communities that they wanted a cost-conscious solution that's sustainable for the long term, one where we wouldn't constantly be coming back to the voters asking for more and more and more, and we think that this plan is it. It's a good, comprehensive plan, and we're excited about it. And we continue to welcome questions and feedback, and we will continue to do that. To that end, we're hosting a couple in-person events and online events to field questions, so I'll leave the dates for those. We sadly had one this past Saturday that had to be canceled because of weather and the power outages, so it'll be rescheduled. But we invite you to any of these. And that's it. Any questions or thoughts?
Yeah, thank you, Megan. Please.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Will you be applying for state funds, especially like revolving funds for the renovations?
Yes. That's all pretty much always in the facilities and budget plan. We won't be applying for state funds for the build of the new school.
Right.
Because of how long that process takes and how unguaranteed those funds are. As we've explored that process, it takes several years for a decision to be made on who receives the funds, and it's usually the top five schools. But then, the top, the top one school is funded, and that takes money out of the kitty. The top two school is funded, and that takes money out of the kitty. And so by the time you get to whichever level you're at, there may not be funds to cover. Multiple years can pass by, and then you lose control of your plan. So not state funds for the entire build, but yes, revolving funds for renovations. For the particular MIW renovations in this project, it's part of the budget, but there are revolving renovations funds that are going into, for instance, the windows at MIW. Those are being replaced this summer.
So how will that be communicated to, like, the voters, so that they have some sort of sense of trust or view of the future, that those revolving funds that are paying for this, for these improvements, don't just sort of get absorbed in future budget increases?
Well, I suppose we hit it right on the head, because you're bringing it up as a concern that people have, and perhaps be a little bit more vocal about when we're applying for those funds and what they're being applied to.
Right.
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question and now suggestion. Yeah.
Just preparing you for future.
Thank you.
Megan, I had a question. You mentioned the longevity of this, this idea of this plan serving for quite some time, and you mentioned a decade or more. And am I remembering this correctly, that the architect, I'm drawing a blank on his name right now, but Stephen Blatt, thank you, talked about expansion at this new school, where I remember the second floor having, where you could effectively, the framing is there, where you could effectively build right on top of that if you needed to expand more. Would that extend this out further than a decade?
Potentially, yeah, depending on, on projections for enrollment. But as it sits now, we think we can comfortably house about 10 to 12 years of students without doing the add-ons.
And that's assuming projections, I guess, increasing the way, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Stephen Blatt designed Greeley Middle School, and it was actually right around 10 years after we moved into Greeley Middle School that we expanded that future expansion that he planned for in the design of the middle school. I think there's still a little bit more room to go out toward the retention pond.
I think that you're right.
I don't know how, but that wing has some additional capabilities.
Yeah, he's, he's identified that and then another area on MIW that could be expanded too. So it's, it's tight, but there is some space there.
Can you remind folks, I know you're going to pass out some things, but can you remind folks for, that might be watching at home, when the, when that next event is that you're having, and so they could join online or in person?
That is a great question. Two options. So the first online event is Tuesday, April 23, and that's the school campus and design. So Steve Blatt will be at that going through the plan. And so we'll communicate out how to log into that meeting. If you can't make it, it'll be taped, and you can access it later. We'll have a turf field presentation virtually Wednesday, May 1. And that will be attended by Dave Shapiro. He will have answers to some of the pressing questions that we've had about what's the safest turf? Where can we find the safest turf? What are the guarantees that it's safe from a sort of chemical standpoint? And we'll have two of our community MDs who graciously have agreed to be there, one who's an orthopedist, one who's a sports med doc, talking about injuries on turf and how you mitigate those injuries, because happily, there's, there's a lot known about that. Then we have a site walk onsite, so it's actually where the school is to be built, if it passes, Saturday, May 4, 11:00 AM. One more virtual right after that, Monday, May 6, and that's about safety. So our police chief will be there talking about the safety of the plan and how the architect is building in safety features for the new school. Monday, May 13 is our At Valhalla in-person informal Q and A. Steve Blatt will be there. It'll be open to the public for questions and answers. And then there's a financing presentation Thursday, May 16, online. So I will leave these. These are also posted on msad.org, upper right-hand corner, New School Project. That's where you can get all these dates.
Great.
Yeah.
I think maybe it'd be helpful to leave some of those on that back table, just for folks here that can grab them on the way out. That'd be great.
Will do, yeah.
Can I ask for a question?
Yeah, please.
How, how do you do virtual? How do you get to your, our Zoom?
Yeah, the question was, how do you, what's your mechanism for virtual?
So we'll have, that will go out in the crier on our website, how you log in, which site you go to to log in. Whether it's going to be Zoom or a different platform, not totally sure yet, but we'll, we'll post notice of that.
So they'll be on the crier, not the, the school notice?
We'll put it in the crier, too.
Okay, good.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Good.
I have one more little nugget of advice. I'd like you to take another look at the maintenance building numbers for the cost for the building of it, and then take a drive down to Middle Road to where Michael J.'s story has just built a huge building.
Yeah.
His building, according to my sources, was under $800,000 to build. And the maintenance building is significantly higher priced than $800,000. So you might be able, it might be overpriced, and so I just encourage you to take a look.
I'm curious about the one.
Take a tour. I know Mike, Mike would give you a tour.
Okay.
Because they have offices and things upstairs. They're actually leasing out space.
Interesting, interesting. Okay, thanks.
Before we let you escape, too, you kind of glossed over the 25 million in savings. That is a dollar off the tax rate right there compared to what the original project was, so thank you for that. I think that is working pretty well. I think Scott is doing a great job in pulling the debt service numbers together, so they looking at things that we did here with debt service reserves to kind of flatten a curve a little bit, so it doesn't jump up so much. I've been really impressed with the preliminary numbers, and hopefully by your, your finance meeting, you're going to have, have them pretty well polished and be ready to present to the community. But we're definitely going in the right direction, so thank you for that, Megan, and don't gloss over that so fast, because that's a big number for us.
That's a big savings.
As we're 70% of that, you know, we're $1.4 million a year in debt service that you're avoiding for us, and that's over a dollar.
Yeah, no, thank you.
Yeah, thanks for pointing that out.
Allow one more question from the audience here. It depends on how short it is. Do you mind just asking it, asking it to her, and we can repeat? Got it. So the question was, the three, the, the question was, the question was, I will repeat it. The question was, for the $3 million budget that is being proposed for the turf field, is that baking in the idea that it would be the highest-quality turf, the safest turf being purchased, as opposed to the lowest, cheapest-quality turf that might not be as safe, so?
Yep. From, from what we have communicated with Steve Blatt's team is that that is a higher-than-middle-of-the-road price, and that it's been made abundantly clear to them that we do not want that sort of cheapest, crappiest turf, definitely. I mean, I think that's how a lot of people feel, yeah. So they are gathering quotes with Dave Shapiro based on what we've said, which is avoid PFAS, make it as recyclable as it can, make it as sustainable as it, as it can be. So that is the commitment that we've received from the builder. And once it's in the referendum, we're not going to come back and ask for more money. That's just not how, what we can do. But yes, there is planning ahead for making it a good, as safe as possible turf.
Thank you. Mr. Manager.
So one thing with the last time we redid the turf on that field is that they had to do what they call a V wrap.
The living, living turf.
On the living turf, the grass that's there now. So, so I'm sure Steve Blatt will remember, but we had to mitigate because of the arsenic. That all was apple orchards forever, and the chemicals they use, so you don't have spots on your apples, is arsenic. So you want to just make sure he cap, because the middle school has lots of these artificial mounds there where we buried a lot of that material and then grasped over it. That's an allowable way.
Arsenic mounds, yep.
That's, that's the allowable way to get rid of it. It really is, and you cap it over. But when it was on the active field before we changed it all out, I mean, all that dust going in the air from dry turf and all that stuff, you know, contained arsenic. So we really have come a long way from where we were 25 years ago, and, you know, I think, I think they're going in the right direction. So hopefully, we'll find out if the voters do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I believe that's some. Sure, she just, please.
So our commitment is to, to install a turf field that is no PFAS. And there are manufacturers who can guarantee that. So that's our commitment to the community, is that that is the field that we want. Because we want the safest field possible for our kids that doesn't have dangerous chemicals, that allows for playtime, disallows for injuries, which we have plenty of on the grass field, and allows kids to play nine months of the year without driving all over at night for turf time. So our commitment is that we want a PFAS-free, recyclable-as-possible turf field. Yeah, absolutely.
Good question.
Yeah.
Okay, well, Council Bill.
A couple of comments with regards to the maintenance building. I'm, I'm a little disappointed that there hasn't been any conversations with the town of Cumberland about putting that maintenance building off campus. I think that, you know, there are, if you're looking at long-term and being visionary, you're, you're putting it in the wrong place, in my opinion. And I would like to think that we should at least have that conversation about what there might be some other places in this community that, that might be able to put that. The next thing, I'm, I'm a little concerned about the turf field. Not, you know, a great idea. We've been talking about it for 20 years. It's one of those nice things to have. It's not a need thing to have. The same thing with a performing oddsetter. It's a nice thing to have. It's not a need thing to have. And I'm disappointed that we have not had any fundraising for either one of those projects. It's too late for the, for the performing oddsetter, but it's not too late for the turf field. And, you know, you talk about the savings from $75 million out of $50 million. Yes, that's, that's significant, but it is still $50 million, and that is going to be a, a big impact on the taxpayer. The conversations that we have here, we had a budget meeting this evening before the regular meeting, and it's, it's, it's always gone this way. We take into consideration the spending of the school and the school's spending habits when we look at our own expenses. And more often than not, we are holding back on making improvements, capital improvements, we're delaying plans. You know, and if I take that, that $3 million for a turf field, I could fund some paramedics over here on the side of the street, or I could have another police officer. So there's, I'm concerned that we don't have enough conversations between the school and the communities about ongoing spending habits and having the conversation of, you know, what, what's, what's needed for the community. And all too often, you know, I spent some time across the street, so I know how those conversations go. You know, we're, we're focusing on what our task is at the head, and that is education. task is at the head, and that is educating kids. I get that. But we also know that we all live in this community together, and the way to be successful is to make sure that the conversations are a little further broad-based and not so narrowly focused. I wish you luck, but I also wish that you would restrain yourselves a little bit.
Can I speak to the things that you brought up? Is that all right?
Yeah, of course.
Okay. Regarding the maintenance building, the old maintenance building, it is the architect and his team who did survey the building. It's their opinion that it would not withstand a move. And the group that does the farmer's market had said, maybe we can absorb it. And then they said, we can't, and we also can't afford the cost. And then when Steve Blatt's team looked at it, they said, I don't think it would survive a move. So it had been discussed, moving or sort of, you know, taking it apart and moving it somewhere had been discussed. It does not seem feasible, I'm sorry to say.
I wasn't talking about trying to save the building.
Oh.
I was talking about maybe that you might put it where the bus garage is down here, and you would save the area beside the swim pool, because I think that's a more important piece of property. And I think that you should at least have the conversation with the town manager about what, if any, chances there are to put it someplace else.
To put the new maintenance building. The new maintenance building, is what you're saying. I think part of the appeal to putting it behind the field is that they can store the plows and the drivable machinery there and then pull it out. I hear you. I'll bring it up. I'll bring it up in our facilities meeting. Yeah, because it would be nice to have it offloaded.
Thank you, Megan. I think I recall from our last meeting where Stephen Blatt did present, there were some energy efficiency components into the new building. Could you just touch on that briefly? Because I, also thinking, back to our cost conversation, investments like, you know, the three-pane windows, which may pay off over our electricity bills over a long period of time, a little bit more expensive to put in. But I was just curious what some of those components of the new building are. And you also mentioned new windows at MIW, or those, anything that you could, any color you could give us around the sustainability and energy efficiency kind of upgrades or components of the new build? I would love to hear.
I'll defer mostly to Steve Blatt for that. But what he is trying to build is an energy extremely efficient building. We cannot put solar on the roof of that building. There's not enough space for it. But what he is committed to building is a really efficient building, because gas, natural gas, is already there.
Yep.
His plan is to use that and to use heat pumps.
Okay.
But he is, he's sort of with the times, as it were, in choosing highly efficient materials and has plans for it to be a highly efficient building.
Okay, cool.
As far as the windows that are being replaced at MIW, I would refer to the facilities committee. I'm happy to get back to you with that information. Much of what's being done is just, they have to be replaced. They're very old. And, but making choices that will reduce the cost overall of heating and cooling, yeah. Heating, really, at any level, so no cooling there.
Yeah. I would like to echo Bob Vail's concerns and just add just the reminder that only a third of our households have kids in school.
Yeah.
And I know you've been, this board's been very mindful of that, and I appreciate it. Bob, I wanted to share my 20,000-foot view from the Recreation Advisory Committee, and that is the concern about the number of kids participating in athletics and using up green space for more fields and more fields. How many more fields can we put at Twinbrooks? Would a turf field conserve some of that green space that we might have to develop if it weren't for a turf field? It's just a just saying. The most recent field we got was at Twinbrooks, was with cooperation from the CSC, you know, and that was a long time ago. But it's just something to be mindful of and something that I know Pete Bingham is concerned about. Field time and gym time and all of those things as kids become healthier and healthier.
All the more reason that we should have undertaken some fundraising on this years ago.
Don't disagree.
And that's really my primary, I don't have a problem with the logistics and why it makes sense to.
Yeah, it's just another thing to think about.
Any other questions for Megan? Council Cop?
Sorry for coming in late, but I was extremely busy today. Just the rumor from the oligarch on the west side of town, when you put this to vote, everybody that I've talked to says that you should have two options, one with a turf field and one without, because they are afraid that it's going to go down in smoke with the turf field. And if you had the option, yea or nay, I think you'll get the school, but you might not get the turf field. And that's just a rumor on the street, so.
Yeah, I've heard that rumor, too.
Yeah.
And we made a conscious decision to keep the turf field in the overall package because we heard from so many people about the need for it and about-
I mean, I'm just putting it out there.
Yeah, no, it's a rumor I've heard, too.
And I have grandkids that they'd probably be mad at me because I said this tonight, but they're looking forward to a turf field. But I just am afraid that might be what sinks the ship.
I would hate to see the whole thing torpedoed because people don't want turf. I think all of us would hate to see that. But we feel strongly that it's needed.
Okay. I mean, I'm just letting you know what I'm hearing, so.
And I'm hearing you.
Yeah. And Megan, I just want to say thank you for coming and giving us these updates.
Oh, thanks for having me.
I know for quite some time, there weren't these regular kind of meetings back and forth between the two boards and the council. And so I think it's really important that we all communicate and we're here updating each other. And I think we can probably do a better job on the council coming over and seeing you and giving you updates as to what's going on here as well. So just really appreciate that.
Thanks for having me. I appreciate it. I will leave these copies of future in-person and online events.
That'd be great.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. Now, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to have Jen Doten, our town clerk, come up just to kind of give you an update on the elections and additional information.
Great.
Hi, thanks for having me this evening.
Yeah.
Jen Doten, your town clerk. Just want to give you an update on where we are with our June elections and nomination papers. Nomination papers are due this Thursday by 6:00 p.m. People that have taken out nomination papers have to obtain 25 signatures, no less than 25, no more than 50. So far, what is open, as you know, are three seats for the town council, which is the four-side, the West, and at-large. And there are two seats on the school board. Currently, we have 13 people that have taken out nomination papers. Some of those people have taken out nomination papers for different seats. They all know that they can take everyone out, but they can only return one. So we have some people out there just kind of trying to decide where they want to, maybe where they want to be seated. So five people that have turned them in, have turned, three have turned in for the at-large, one for West, and one for four-side. That list has not changed, I think, since the last time I updated you. Others that are still out-
Those were taken, sorry to interrupt. Those were taken out?
Those were five that were returned. Yep, 13 people took them out. Five people have returned them. So the ones that have not been returned, and these numbers won't add up, which is why I prefaced with, some people took out more than one seat. So the other ones that have not been returned are papers, four for at-large, one for West, one for four-side, and four for the school board. So those people that are left could turn in papers, obviously, for one or the other for some of those. We were a little concerned at first about, and still concerned, because I still have no papers turned in for the school board. And what happens if nobody turns in papers? Then I end up having to tally votes for write-ins, valid write-ins, not the Mickey Mouse and President Reagan, but valid residents. And after the election, we tally all those up, the elected write-in person would be contacted. That person could still turn down taking the seat. They could still say, no, thank you. And at that point, you, as the town council, are empowered by the charter to fill that seat when it becomes vacant in June until the next regular election, and for us would be June of '25. Hopefully, that won't happen.
Council Bill?
I know that the school budget validation vote is on that ballot also. Is there anything on state or other local issues that will be up for vote in June?
For June, we'll have the state primaries still. So it will be another semi-open election for this, your state representatives, your sheriff, your district attorney. Those people will be on. As far as I know, I haven't seen the ballot yet.
So that's a primary election?
That's a primary election for them, and it's a semi-open primary, just like what we went through in March. So we'll be holding two elections at the same time for the state and one for our municipal, which will include, at least municipal and school will be as one.
Any constitutional votes will be in November?
Correct. November's your general. Any other questions?
Just to clarify one. You mentioned that there's been four papers that have been pulled out for school board, but none returned yet currently. Okay.
Right, yep, absolutely. So I just want to remind people, since you did bring up the whole June piece as well, that absentee ballot applications are now available to apply for online. So we're, again, encouraging people to go that route, because there will be, again, a lot of ballots possibly in front of them. The clerks will have a lot of ballots to sort through as people tell them which party ballot they want, plus our municipal ballot, plus our school ballot. And from what I can tell from the absentee ballot application, it looks like every party has somebody on this upcoming ballot. So the possibility of having five party ballots and then our two. So seven ballots on the table for those poor checking people to sort through as people come up. So encourage your people to maybe try absentee voting.
Yeah.
Did the legislation pass where seniors only have to apply once for? It did pass, so they can register now?
Yep.
At what age?
65 and plus. So it started right before March, but we weren't really told about it immediately.
Right.
So we're a little behind the eight ball on that one. But we are, as we see people, we try to ask them if they want to do it. And it is one time, they apply, they're signed up forever to have absentee ballots. And if they decide they don't want to do it, they just let us know, notify us, and we can remove them from that process. But it's, I think, a great opportunity for a lot of people.
I read that little nugget in that little legislative update we get.
Yeah.
I thought, wow, that's pretty cool. So people might not forget to vote if they get it in the mail.
Exactly, yeah.
Automatically.
It's nice for the senior citizens that have to call every time because they're not able maybe to leave their homes even. And we ask them and get them signed up as well.
Great.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
No.
Awesome.
Thank you very much for the update. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Jen. So a couple more items. Friday, we had a community picnic here at Town Hall, for those of you who attended. There were probably close to 70 people packed in this room and throughout the entire building and offices and, you know, basically working because we had Wi-Fi and power, and we had every power strip available in this room and tables set up everywhere. Council Vail and his therapy dogs stopped by to carry chaos all afternoon. So that was fun to see. The kids that were here really enjoyed that, Bob. Thank you for doing that.
Did you get the NCAA games up?
No. By that time, the games came up, we were pretty empty.
Most people were.
Yeah, people went home for the evening, for the most part. But Council Filson was our coffee person. She was running back and forth. We did about 14 pots of coffee down here during the day. I mean, people, I've never seen people drink so much coffee. I think the Dunkin' Donuts in the lobby is definitely going to work for us. So it was amazing. And she also serves as my plumber. So she was unbelievable. She went from the women's bathroom, took care of it. It was unbelievable. And I thanked her mightily because I was not figuring out how I was getting in there, so.
But I just noticed that the toilet that I plunged is now out of order.
Yes, yes.
So you might need a new plumber.
No, yeah, I got here the next day early to try to fix all that. It just was a mess.
Sorry.
Anyway, no, it was all good, all good. So honestly, it was nice to walk through the building. I think both of you could agree that people were in good spirits. People were happy to see. They were talking with each other. And it was really making the best out of a bad situation. And I really mean that because there were still people that didn't have power even up to yesterday and today. I'm not, they show that we're all back, but there's still, I think, a handful of people waiting for those special circumstances where services got ripped off of houses and stuff that aren't back yet. So I appreciate all the chatter on the council line, when who got power, who didn't, who was going up to Jackman with Mike Eads. That was kind of fun to see. I was expecting about two of you here tonight, so. So that was great. So it worked very well. I would share with you that this building was, and we opened the library on Friday, too, and the library was packed as well.
And Saturday.
So, and Saturday. So they were on generator, the whole, so they were able to open. And we were able to get crew together to get the facility working. And that was a huge help. Keeping people, the public in this building or in the library is a lot safer than trying to keep them out of the fire station when they're coming in and out, trying to get crews changed over, trying to deal with staffing stuff. And then if we had to open up emergency operations centers, that gets really complicated. It just doesn't work well with people wandering in the building either. So this building works great, and none of the chairs are missing, so it's great. We did well. Let's see, we are moving our April 22 meeting of the town council to April 29. That is in observance of Passover. I think we caught that in our calendar back in June, back in last June when we were setting the calendar. But somehow, I missed it when we were looking ahead. And remember, the June council meetings are the first and third because of the elections. It would be very difficult to have the election here the night before, the night before the council meeting, the night before the election. So in June, we historically have done first and third, so that will still be the case. We are looking at an April 10 meeting with the town of North Yarmouth and their select board and joint standing committee. We will look at trying to discuss and explore options related to our school funding formula. Many of you know that, for the most part, and for almost 60 years, we have been doing it essentially on valuation. And there are other models that are available out there. And most importantly, I think, that might come out of this is that maybe we could get together every, you know, five years or so just to look at that formula and see if it's still balanced or it needs to be tweaked. Because it's very difficult to open that up again if you don't have a plan. If you have a plan that says every five years, the board will get together and review with the communities the strategies. Right now, we're at about 67% student population, and we're about 72% of the valuation. So it's about a 5% swing right now, and that's probably the biggest gap we've had in a long time. So it doesn't hurt to start talking about it and seeing what it looks like if there's other strategies that we could do going forward, whether that be a higher portion of student population and a lower portion of valuation, or some combination. The math is limitless. So we'll be talking a lot about that and hopefully coming up with a recommendation that, you know, both towns could endorse, that we could go together to the school board and discuss this, you know, over the course of the next few months as well. So that's this Wednesday night, 5:00 p.m. at the North Yarmouth Community Center. On April 25, here at 6:00 p.m., it's a Thursday evening, we'll be meeting with the Main Street Neighborhood, if you will. That will be the Town Center District. Everyone in the Town Center District will receive a postcard, most likely by the end of this week, about that meeting. And to attend that meeting, we'll be discussing potential changes to the hours of business that are now in the TCD, which restricts businesses to stay open till 9:00 p.m. We're looking to adjust that some way. We received a negative vote from the planning board to do anything with that. I think their concern was that we should take a broader look at that and have some more meetings before we make a final decision. So it's been in the planning board, neighbors testified. But this has to do, not with zoning violations or any violations. This has to do with that really one item about extending the services, or if there are other things in that district that might want to be tweaked, we could look at that, I guess. But that, if we did anything else other than the hours, we'd have to go back to the planning board again. So I think it was pretty clear that the planning board was in favor of leaving it the way it was. New resident orientation. New resident orientation, that is on May 7 at 6:00 PM. I think, I don't think it's changed. Is May 7 a Tuesday? Not sure what night of the week it is.
It's 6:00 PM in our-
Yep. Okay. So we'll say that's when it's going to happen for right now, but that's subject to change. But May 8, it's a very busy-
It is a Tuesday. May 7 is a Tuesday.
I won't say why I may not be here.
Oh.
But anyway, we'll come back to that one. I thought that was still a work in progress, but maybe it's not.
Save it then.
Meet the Candidates, however, will be on May 8 here in this room at 6:00 PM. It will be televised. I'm really concerned. I can't get thirteen people up there. So this will be real interesting, how many people turn their papers in. I can do nine, but that's eight and a moderator. So nine is the most we ever had before. So it'll be interesting. It'll be cozy. Let's put it that way. So I think if we do get that many candidates, we may have to separate out the school board and the council. And that's, we've done that before. We've only combined them when they were essentially running unopposed. So that'll be fun. That'll be fun to see, and I'm looking forward to that. And it's really exciting. I hope people will really give it some serious thought because I think it's great to see the interest we have in the community right now. So real excited about that. And that's all I have for the manager's report tonight, Mr. Chair.
Great. Thank you very much.
The one thing I do want to ask is that before we open legislative and policy, we, you will need to take a vote to add an item to the agenda that we discussed during the Finance Committee meeting.
Okay. So we'll do public discussion first and then go into that initial vote before we get into legislation and policy. Okay. Thank you very much. We now move to public discussion. Public discussion is for comments on items that are not on the agenda. Comments are limited to five minutes per person. Rebuttal comments will be limited to two minutes. Public discussion topics may be brought up again under new business for further council discussion. Is there anyone from the audience who would like to address the council on an item that's not on the agenda?
Bruce Shaw in Blanchard wrote, "I'm here to talk about the school vote also and the turf, et cetera." I went to the school board meeting last Monday night. And like Mr. Kopp, I've had a lot of people from West Cumberland actually ask me to talk about the turf issue. Because they're like me. We don't want to see it blended in on the vote. We want a separate vote for it. And it's not so much that people don't want turf, they don't want to pay for it. It's the money, not the turf. For a lot of people, that includes me. I'm not a turf against turf. I'm against kind of paying for it. And sort of tied in with that is, because of the $3 million, I noticed, it's similar to the $3 million Little League issue that's come up. I told the school board, and I'm going to tell you folks tonight, I think the Little League may have a higher priority than the turf. We're building a school for young elementary kids to come in because they're expanding. Miles Hanton, old friend of mine, I coached him, and he's on a couple of my all-time teams for basketball. Miles is a good man. He's been looking for fields for five years, according to what he's told me and to the letter he sent to you. He needs fields. His stuff involves girls and boys. And I think, unless we can do both money-wise, find a way to do it both, we should weigh the priorities of which is more important. And the school board needs to hear from that. Tied in with that is, I noticed on the joint committee meeting Wednesday night, North Yarmouth and Cumberland, I noticed there is one. And Mr. Shane talked about, you're going to be talking with the school about how they portion things. My philosophy, and I said this at the school board meeting, my thinking is, we might want to get the Little League fields into the school. They get a portion by the town automatically if they're part of the school. And they just become athletic fields for the school that are used for younger kids. That's my theory. And if, I think it's a higher priority than turf. The more I hear about turf, the more I like it, but I still don't want to pay for it. I'd rather pay for Little League fields. Mr. Vale has brought up fundraising for it. As I've committed before, if we do a fundraiser for Little League, I will put the first $10,000 in. That's what I think of it. That's my strong opinion of these younger people need fields to do stuff on. And also, the other thing to think about this on, they're splitting the vote. You're not telling people that they can't have their turf, they just got to come out and vote for it. You know? And the old people can come out. But the way they're doing it, they're kind of being disrespectful to the town people that don't want turf. They're not giving them an option. If I, as I told the town, the school board, if I had to vote today, I would vote no. And if enough people vote no because you tied it in with the school vote, you're going to be whining because you don't have a new school again. The school board will be. They should do everything they can to get that school passed because I think they've done the best they can on the cost, and it's time to get it voted in. Don't perk the turf with it, that may kill it. That was my message to the school board. They still voted to do it the way they're doing it Monday night. Maybe we could have a referendum on the Little League and get the turf separated. It's just a thought. I don't know how these things work, really. And voters could vote their preference, which they think is more important. Or it might tell us how many young families are in town as opposed to older do on a vote like that. Because the younger families will vote for the Little League, in my opinion. The other thing to think about it is, in today's world, this has been happening with votes lately, like on the first school vote. I voted against it because it's too far out for emergency use in today's world. That's the reason I vote, not money or stuff like that. There's other reasons to vote against that. I think they've done a good job getting it in town, close to emergency, got the cost down. They've done a good job. I don't know. Maybe it could do better. It's very complicated. I could see things they could do better, but I wouldn't argue about them. The other thing again is, in today's world, these things are so expensive, it's easy to vote no on them. You've got to be careful with what you're putting out there for money, for votes. You've got to be careful. And don't give people a reason to vote no on something that should be yes. That's my opinion on that. So again, the Joint Standing Committee, that might be a place to start talking about this Little League issue. Either how we're going to do it together, or can it be part of the school, or something. I think it, and I think also the joint committee should, if they have a mind to and they agree with it, put a little pressure on the school to get that turf out of the school vote. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else from the public have a topic or an item that they'd like to address that's not on the agenda? Please.
Denise Thorson, Friar Lane in Cumberland. I have a few things. First, I've been plugging this so many times over these last few weeks and months, but the orchard is having a planting day on, next to the brush dump where it lives. On May 5, from 9:00 to 3:00, there's a potluck at noon. There's going to be a flyer going out and posted in public areas around town. It's really well done. And it has more information as well as a QR code to sign up for the potluck if you'd like to bring something. It's going to be a potluck style. Everybody's invited. There's going to be a ton of trees that need planting, but there are so many that we're probably going to do some in advance. Because most people will probably just come to hang out, which is still great because it'd be great to have lots of the community come out and check it out and be a part of it. And this is also not just a planting day, but it's part of the town's requirement as a tree city now to have an Arbor Day celebration. So it's going to be connected. But that's that. More info to come with that. And you can go to CumberlandOrchard.org. That's the site to read all about that and the LCC's work, since it is a subcommittee of the LCC. Second, I was looking at the new resident handout because I plan on going to the May 7 event. I couldn't make it last year. And I have a suggestion. On that handout, it's really cool, but I think there should be a section added for volunteer opportunities in town. Because I know you can see them on the town website if you dig into a few menus. But I would really like to see something on there specifically calling out, you know, Heart, CCLT, Habitat for Humanity, and the Lions Club in particular. When I first came to town, I reached out to the CCLT, to everyone, basically, saying, "I'm new. Put me to work. I want to volunteer." And I didn't really hear back from anyone until I reached out to my neighbor, Dave, who's a Lion, and joined the Lions Club. And it's been amazing. Like, I've met so many people. I've worked at the fair booth before I was joined as an official member or whatever. And it's just such an incredible way to connect with your community and meet people and learn more about your town. And I think that would be very valuable for new people coming into town to have that there. Because the Lions will respond to you. Reach out. They do want you to join, and they will put you to work. There's plenty to do. And they do a lot of good in the community. Last, as I've been watching all of the past town council meetings since they were recorded and reading all the minutes from, like, since 2010, because I find that interesting, I am on the part now where councilors Foster, Story King, and Eads formed that social justice committee. And I wanted to ask a couple of questions about that. Because I know in that one council meeting, you all were discussing kind of, as councilors, sort of like a training, sort of, for new councilors in particular and current ones about kind of using common language, like rules of engagement with communicating with each other. I'm curious, is that a thing? Is that something that the council does for new councilors coming on board? Because as we have this election coming up and as things are very spicy in our community, I am wondering if there are things practically done on the council to make sure that things remain respectful, like we're all using, you can all use the same kind of language and just, I don't know. Is that a thing? Because I know it was mentioned back then.
Yeah, I mean, I can address that briefly. So we're not trying to control folks' language, but I will say that we are in communication right now with an HR consultant to talk with us about onboarding processes. So that could be training from everything, from how you deal with a FOA request to, you know, when something is an official meeting versus when it's not, versus training in terms of maybe decorum or other things. But we're putting together the, kind of the table of contents right now for what that would look like. And so we're just kind of still in the infancy. But I think we want to try to get that across the finish line as soon as we can, especially given the, what will likely be a reasonably large turnover on the council. Yeah. But good question. I think it's something that's important. Thank you. Anyone else from the public have a comment? Okay. Seeing none, we will close public discussion. And we will move into legislation and policy with the first item being us voting to add a new item on the agenda for this evening. And that is to authorize the town manager to expend up to 10% of the roundabout project from TIF funds in the event that earmark funding is received from the federal government to move forward. So in other words, if we, and we can talk about this once this is an agenda item, we talked about this a little bit during our budget workshop this evening. But the idea would be that the earmark funding piece is coming up rather quickly. And the Maine Department of Transportation, I believe, is asking for our input, saying, "Hey, if you get this funding, can you commit to at least 10% of your TIF funds for that cost, not to exceed a $2 million cost out of those TIF funds if that roundabout is earmarked and effectively funded?" So.
And the reason it's coming up as an addition to your budget is we just got the letter today from DOT that they needed the council authorization by the 17th. And that's when they're submitting to our congressional delegation, the DOT commissioner is for these earmarks. So we'll be putting together letters of support. And one of those letters of support would be the authorization to expend up to 10% of the roundabout project, not the TIF funds, on Route 100, not to exceed $2 million without additional town council approval. So we believe it'll be somewhere between 12 and 14 million. So that's only 1.2 to 1.4 only. It's a lot of money. But still, that project will be essentially from Skillen's all the way down Morrison's Hill to the foot of the hill with sidewalks on both sides. It'll be sidewalks to the bridge on Blackstrap and sidewalks to, I think it's Cathy Lane on Skillen Road. So it's a much bigger project than just the roundabout. It'd also be the esplanades and lighting of the sidewalk areas. And there'll be other amenities as we go through the project. It'll take about a year to get the project ready to go to bid. We won't make it for this construction year. So most likely, you'll be seeing that request for funding in your FY probably '26 budget. We looked at that tonight with the Finance Committee, and we have been talking about that support essentially since we started the project on Route 100, especially with the new funding formula where 90% of the cost would be picked up by the federal and state government. So we'll continue pushing that. And hopefully tonight, you can support that funding request. If we do not receive the earmark, we could reapply again next year or the year after and just keep at it. But we're in a timeframe right now where these infrastructure projects are really exciting to most of our congressional delegation. And we get more funding for those type of projects than we would for some other projects that might be out there. So I don't want to miss the opportunity. We've teed it up. We've had a great partnership with DOT. And it's, it means a lot that the DOT commissioner himself is submitting the project because of the work we've done here in town. So I think it's a great project, and I think it'll be a great addition to West Cumberland. And it will kick off a lot of additional economic development that we might not see without it. So I do apologize for the late notice, but 8:00 this morning, it was in my email box and said, "Get moving." So that's where we're at.
That makes sense. Okay. Thank you. Counsel Vale.
I would recommend that we take this item from the end of the agenda and put it right, since we pretty much discussed it, and take this item out of order and put it to a vote now.
Well, let's, I think first, maybe it'll be two votes here. One is to vote to move it and add it to the agenda. And maybe we can, that vote can be a motion, can be, I move to put this as the first item on the agenda this evening.
I would move that.
Okay. We have a motion to put the potential roundabout funding question as the first item on the agenda.
Before we get too fast, should I abstain from this vote?
I think you should ask the council if they would require you to abstain. As you do not have any interest in the roundabout project, you are one of the businesses that abut it. So that would be a discussion for the council to make that decision if you should or should not abstain.
This is just like when I got on the council 18 years ago.
I personally don't see any reason that you should step aside. I think the question that is answerable to all of us is that the appearance, so not so much as that there is. Anyways, I don't see that there is an appearance myself.
I don't. Go ahead, Counsel Philson.
I am comfortable with you voting on this.
I am also comfortable with you voting on this, but I would say that if you feel that you would like to sit out, you certainly can.
Everybody knows I'm for it. I mean, so I mean, I just want, I want to put it out there, so.
I'm all for it.
Okay. I think we've got support for it on the council in general, just given it's something we've been talking about for a long time. So if you would like, I guess what I'm saying is if you would like to step aside for this, recuse yourself for this particular vote?
I think in the eyes of the public, it would be better if I didn't vote.
I think so, too.
Yep.
Yeah. But not because I think there's a conflict, but I think the optics of it.
That way it'll be clear.
Yep.
I think the way you just did conflict is exactly how you should do it every time so that everybody has to say yes or no. And you can still have the, it's really up to you, Ron. And I think it's a good choice. But the council should basically say you do have a conflict or don't, so.
Yep, no, I'm fine with it.
Okay, so we have a motion to add this to the agenda as the first item?
Second.
We have a second, okay, all those in favor of adding this to the first agenda item, okay?
Is there a quorum required?
There is a quorum, we have a quorum.
Is a majority, yeah.
Yep.
So we have, we have four votes in favor of putting it on the agenda, and one abstention, Council Cop. Okay, so now that it's on the agenda, I would accept, unless there's any further discussion on the actual topic.
I would move to authorize the town manager to submit a letter to Dublin Department of Transportation to support the town funding of up to 10% of the roundabout project on Route 100 not to exceed $2 million of TIF funds without additional town approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second.
Public discussion?
Yes, there will be, one clarifying question here for the manager, this was in the letter response back, it's, we're only committed to that 10% funding if we are earmarked, right, it's not that...
Only if we are earmarked, and we should know within, hopefully, the month.
Okay, now, before we take a vote on this...
Can we give, Bill, can you give the public a little background on why this has become an emergency piece of legislation?
Yeah, I did right at the beginning.
Just so people aren't sort of left...
You did, I thought, but go ahead again if it...
Sure, so, today, we received a letter from DOT that basically said on April 17th, they'll be submitting their application to the, our congressional delegation in Washington for an earmark funding, special funding for this piece of legislation. A lot of these transportation projects are falling kind of under the earmark umbrella, that they got away from that for many years, and now that's on the table where there's a lot of federal funding available through the Infrastructure Act, and the commissioner has been aggressively going around the state trying to see projects that would fit under these categories, and I think last year Sanford was funded through this, and he has urged us to get our project to the front of the line as we did, we've been through the whole process with DOT, had our meetings, had at least four public meetings, and have had pretty, pretty substantial support for this through DOT, the community, and the council to date, so, tonight would be just the authorization that we would commit for up to 10% of the funds, should we be granted the earmark to move forward, and we'll know more about that project as it goes forward, hopefully in the next few months, if we, if we're awarded that much money.
And just a clarifying point here before we open it up for public comment, is, that letter is due back to our congressional delegation on the 11th, we don't have our next town council meeting until the 29th.
Yeah, I think it's the 17th, but I...
Oh, the 17th, well, excuse me, 11, it's 11 days until it's due, right, so we don't have our next meeting until the 29th, okay, so, that's, that's why it's here tonight, and the letter was just given today, so, any questions, comments from the public?
Bruce Schorn Blanchard wrote, again, obviously I'm not well-prepared, because this is a surprise, just for the record, I'm not opposed to the roundabout, but I think it is overkill, now, just a question for Mr. Cop, do you hear anything from residents of West Cumberland about the roundabout, what do you hear about it?
Everybody thinks it's a good project because of the economic development that it'll bring.
Is that true?
And I think it will calm traffic down.
Yeah.
Yep.
Since you brought up economic development, can I make a comment about that?
As long as it reasonably relates to the roundabout, sure.
It's not, it's not long, it's just, I'm concerned about the economic development with, and this is going to be against Mr. Cop a little bit, but, I've been in business, the grocery business for 30 years, accounting for 30, I've been around, the Rusty Lantern, I watched the planning board meeting, and apparently they have not done a, and now I'm getting an old, being an old guy, and I'm coming up blank on the term, a market survey, market survey, I think they should be required to, because I think they're going to affect five businesses that are right along the strip there, and if they could put some out of business, we could be looking at empty storefronts up there, doing maybe the opposite of what we want it to do, they're going to affect five businesses, Bud's, the ice cream shop, the pizza shop, the coffee shop, and of course, J. Brothers, and we may have a monopoly on gas up there at some point, so, it's just, they need, they should do a market survey, that's my comment about that, we don't know if there's enough, enough business up there for everybody, I don't think there is. So, back to the, this topic, again, I'm, I'm not for it or against it, it's, I just think it's overkill, it's more than we need, we're going to spend more than we want to for it, and so my question is, you, the, the paper says you're going to expend the 2 million, I think it's 2 million, is that what you said?
Up to 2 million.
Yeah, up to 2 million, and then, the word was used, commit, over there, are we going to be able to get that money back if it doesn't go through, how does that work?
We would not commit to the funding through TIF unless it was earmarked and funded, and if it's not funded, it's not built.
So, we're not going to write a check, are we, we're not, okay, that's what I wondered, and, so the TIF committee has not voted on this yet either, they have to vote on this before the council does.
Correct, it would be a formal act, well, the TIF committee would bubble up to the council, and the council is now voting on it.
Say that again, I didn't understand that.
Anything that's done at the TIF committee level that would require council authorization would bubble up to the council, for the council to vote on it, and the council is now currently addressing this issue.
So does that, so does that mean the TIF committee vote is irrelevant, is that what you're saying?
This was discussed during the Finance Committee, and two of us are sitting here on the TIF committee.
I'm just trying to help people learn how it works. The council is a binding authority for the town of Cumberland. I didn't get that. Not any committee. I didn't get that, Bill, say it again. The council is the binding authority for the town of Cumberland. Okay, yep. Not the TIF committee. Yep. The council, this council right here is authorizing... Don't, don't get mad, I just asked an easy question. Well, you are, yep. You get mad at me all the time, Bill, Bob, go ahead. We're going to make a decision here, and that is the, that's what we're here to do. Yeah. Not, not a committee, we may take recommendations from a committee, like... I just, I'm just telling you what Bill Shane told me in another meeting when I, when we talked about this, how I understand how it works, so, okay, so that's my, the other thing I'm thankful that this come up is because you used the word earmarks, and I was gonna say that, that turf, that turf thing on the school thing is kind of an earmark on that school vote, in my opinion, adding on something that's irrelevant, thank you.
Okay, any other comments from the public?
Hi, Denny Sorsen Fireland again, as I said before, I've been going through 24 years of town council minutes and many videos, and one thing that comes up over and over again, I'm seeing, is lack of interest in commercial development by businesses on the Route 100 corridor, it's been a thing that councils of present and past have been trying for a very long time to attract business there, to increase our commercial tax base, like, everyone always talks about, like, easier said than done, and by doing that, you are reducing taxpayer burden, that's what everyone complains about, I'm, I'm very nervous about revaluation and what my taxes might go up to, so, I think it's a great opportunity to modernize it, make it nice, like, the town manager Shane said, it's not just putting it around about, it's other things too, it's improvements that will make it an attractive place to go, and B, it'll be walkable, there'll be sidewalks, and it will attract businesses, because right now there's not a whole lot there to attract much of anything, so, that's my perspective on it, I think it's, I think it's good, it'll be a good thing, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public have a comment on this agenda item? Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment on that, and I would welcome a motion from one of my...
You have a motion.
Oh, excuse me, we have a motion in a second, all right, okay, so, any other questions or comments from the council? Okay, all those in favor? Four in favor, all those abstaining, I guess I would say, we have one abstention, thank you, and thanks, Ron, for bringing that up. Okay, moving to the next item on the agenda, to hold a, oh, excuse me, we're going to go to, that was 24-030 that we just voted on, that we moved to the top of the agenda item, and we're going to vote, discuss now 24-026, to consider and act on the acceptance of a deed of gift for the open space area in the Ross Estates subdivision, I'm wondering if our esteemed friend and colleague, Mr. Mike Schwint from the LCC, might be willing to come up and give us a little background on this, I know we had an LCC meeting this, this week, where we learned a little bit about this, and the conservation subdivision ordinance, and seeing it in action, so, I appreciate any additional context you can provide.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'm Mike Schwint, Chair of your Lands and Conservation Commission, I'm pleased to report that your commission, and it's April 3rd meeting unanimously recommended that the town council accept a gift of 6.39 acres of open space in Ross Estates, in our February 2021 recommendation through the planning board, which is included, it's part of the supplemental information you have there, we addressed how this property could be a connector between 30 acres of privately owned open space in the adjoining Stonegate subdivision, and connect with 20 acres of town-owned open space in the West Branch subdivision, since the developer's plan shows two existing trails in Ross Estates, with one connecting to a trail in the town of Gray, having the land under town control enables the development of future connecting trails through this, and the adjoining properties, that also says that the problem is having to work out future agreements with homeowners' association on trail location and that sort of stuff, as well as the question, the maintenance of, of the trails once they're there, under the terms of the conservation subdivision ordinance, the permitted use of the space would include passive recreation, such as hiking, biking, snowshoeing, and other low impact, low impact activities, agriculture, horticulture, silver culture, or pasture uses, using the best practices as defined by the state, non-structural stormwater management, such as for rain gardens, easements for drainage access and underground utilities, as well as other conservation oriented uses, such as community gardens, the land could not be used for roads, parking lots, and impervious surfaces, subsurface wastewater disposal systems, and wells, could not be used for dumping or disposal of yard waste, vegetation, that sort of stuff, no cutting except for the annual mowing to prevent undesirable shrubbery, removing forest cover and vegetation damaged or destroyed by the forces of nature, or in moving, removing invasive vegetation. Again, we ask that the town council accept the gift of the open space for Ross Estates, thank you.
Great, thank you very much, any questions from the council?
Could you bring that up on a tax map, that parcel land?
Yeah, well, I have to go over there.
Right, I just, I'm curious to the town, the possibility of connecting to the town's 20 acres.
I think this way to get it might be through Brenda's email.
Yeah, but that's to you, this is...
Yeah.
It's linked to the email she sent out with the town council packet.
Right, but I can't get to that, so, unless I go back to my email.
I've got it, hang on.
Which'll take a sec.
I thought I looked at that, and I'm just going through my, my packet here.
I've got it right here.
If you find this week's packet, and then click on the blue line.
Safari can't open it.
I've got it.
Did you find it?
I finally got into it.
Yeah, I've got it.
I got it too, but I gotta, I mean, Bill, you think if we forward it to you?
I'm looking at page seven, eight, seven, 18.
I get it.
There's page 16 and page 18.
I can text you the link.
He's got it, if he just clicks on the link in her packet, if you just search packet.
Who's faster?
You probably are, but...
Council packet right there, and then, right there at the, no, 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 go back.
Yeah, there's a link actually in her email.
Go back, it's in the body of the email, Bill.
Yeah, you can't get to it from there.
207. I can text it to you, Bill.
Well, I can't get to it if you text it to me, so...
Here it is, right there.
Can you just search in your Outlook the word packet, and then her email should pop up?
I can go back to Brenda and get it real fast, I just...
You can tell he's not a Mac user. I can put it in a new email for you, so it's at the top of your inbox.
There you go.
The packet, right.
He's got it, he's got it.
Yeah, I just wanted to see where...
It was there when you opened it the first time.
The green, I believe, is the town.
No, it's not in the packet.
Here, I, I've got it.
It's in the email.
I just sent it to you, Bill.
Okay, thank you.
To your email.
Extension, so, this is...
I love our security system.
No, Blanchard Road's down here.
This is Blanchard Road, extension.
Extension, right, so this is, this is, this is 100 here.
So, Bob, do we still need Bill to go through a whole software update, or whatever he's doing here, just to be able to show you something that you now have? Or are we good?
Anyways, the, the green, I believe, on my map here is the town.
Bill, I just emailed the link to you.
I sent it to him, we're good.
It's fine, Bill, I think, I think we're, Bill, I think we're good.
Sure.
Thank you for your efforts.
Yeah.
Don't save.
Question answered.
Okay.
All right.
Bob, did you have a question on that?
No, I, I see where it's, it's connected to the town property and, and the potential for, for the use.
This is right on the western border of our town.
So, do we own that property, or is that an easement, the dark green, if you look on page 18 and the dark green?
It'll be an easement to the town, it'll be an easement to the town of Cumberland.
What's that?
It'll be an easement to the town of Cumberland.
So it's not, so they still have to pay taxes, that's my question, they're giving us a gift of land.
Right, right.
Which is different from accepting an easement of land, CMP has an easement across my property, but I pay the property taxes.
Because it's technically still your property, you've just granted the legal right of access on that property.
So, are we, are they, they're looking to gift us the land, and that would get them out of paying property taxes.
My question is...
How about the dark green properties next to that, are those easements where property owners pay the property taxes?
They, they could be in some form of open space to basically reduce the tax burden, and they would be allowed to be in open space under the state rules, this will be an easement to us, typically, open spaces are no longer taxed as parcels, they're assigned by subdivision a portion of those, because of some of the gamesmanship that went on.
My land that CMP occupies, but I, that doesn't matter.
So, I'm not, I'm not reading this gift as a granting of an easement, I'm reading it as legal title being given as a gift of ownership.
Oh, well, giving it us in fee is fine, but...
Well, I mean, that's what it's saying, it's saying, described as follows, that they're gifting this to the town of, is that the way you're reading this, Mike, as well?
Mr. Chairman, I'm reading this as a gift, where we get titled to the land.
Correct.
Now, Bill, you may recall earlier discussion on this, when we talked about this, the idea was that if the developer gifted the land to us, the value of that land would be added to the homes of the, that were being developed in there, so, yeah, it's arguably, it's not being taxed, but its value is tacked on to the value of the homes.
That's absolutely right, Mike.
Yep, I remember that as well, okay, so in other words, property taxes are effectively still being paid...
Yes.
Because the value of the gifted land is effectively dispersed and spread across the values of the land that remains with the owners, right?
In this case.
In this case, okay.
Because of its open space, that's to the benefit of all people.
Council Cop.
I may have this wrong, but my opinion is that he's trying to give us this land to get it off the tax roll.
That's what I worry about.
This land, he can't put a house on.
But, but that's because of our ordinance.
That's, that's what I'm getting at, Bill, but if it remained open space in the development, somebody would still pay taxes on it if there was an easement on it, am I correct?
Technically...
I just don't want to, I just don't want to take a gift, you're shooting yourself in the foot, if you take it off the tax roll, that's, and maybe I'm not looking at it right.
That was not the intent of the conservation subdivision ordinance, to remove properties from the tax rolls.
But I'm fairly certain it allowed it to be gifted, or to be given in fee, or as an easement, either way, either way, the value of that open space is still going to be assigned to those homes because they're direct, there are direct benefits of it, the rest of us get to use it if we want to drive up to the end of Blanchard Road Extension, so, I, I see, I see it in concert with the ordinance and the intent of the ordinance, and I, I think, you're not going to be able to develop it unless you change the ordinance, I think singly, the conservation subdivision ordinance will protect more open space in this community than anything we've done ever, I think the last thing that came out of the comp plan, that was probably the singly, the most important piece of legislation we ever had.
When I was, sorry.
No, please.
When I was reading through the documents, though, it indicated that the developer preferred a traditional subdivision model.
Right.
But they also indicated it wouldn't have really changed... But they also indicated it wouldn't have really changed their plan for the property, whether it was traditional or conservation subdivision. So, it wasn't even clear to me that this was, was this approved as a conservation subdivision project?
Yes, it was. It has to be, if it's in the RR1 and RR2, that's, it's not optional, RR1 and RR2, it has to go through conservation.
Well, it wasn't 2021 when they...
No, I think this was, this came under that rule.
We voted on this as a council to...
It started a long time ago.
Initially, they could have a choice on their, the second time the conservation subdivision eas, uh, ordinance was revised, it said a developer must submit a conservation subdivision and may submit a traditional.
Okay.
Instead of throwing it up in the air like it was initially, that's in section four, 25014, if I recall.
And I do remember that, Mike, thank you for bringing that up, because I was, what I guess my opinion was, is that he was gonna use all of the good land and give the junk land away, and that's not the case here, and I'm glad you brought that up to make that clear, because I do remember us voting on that, that they had to designate a certain portion of a development.
Yes, and part of the land that must be set aside is some of the better farmland, there's one of those seven, seven different pieces that are identified for, for, for setting aside, and one is agricultural land classified at the upper end of the scale on that, and this, and this land does meet that, used to be part of an apple orchard, if I recall.
A lot clearer, so thank you for bringing that up, so...
I, I do, would have a concern with the process that we went through with the planning board at the last meeting on Harris Road, and it was almost as if it were more of a public hearing than a workshop, and I thought it was a very awkward setting, I was really thinking that, it was televised, so it's kinda hard to sit around the table and look at the plan, but the intent initially when the, the council and everybody that worked on that basically came up with is that we were gonna start with a, you know, essentially the map of the subdivision and then decide where the conservation land was going to be, that was gonna be the first slice of the pie, if you will. It didn't go that way the other night, and I was, I was kinda puzzled. The Conservation Commission was represented there, they did ask their questions, and I think this subdivision was kind of an anomaly because the way they had shaped the open space was a huge piece of the land that was in kind of the open grass area, the more of the farmland type, and it probably would, would have been the piece the Conservation Commission would have said, that's, that looks like a good plan. I think developers are in a tough spot where they have to come with some type of plan and some type of idea, or else they're, you know, you're gonna spend three hours drawing, you know, lots on a piece of paper, and that's not productive for anybody, but this was kind of the exception, and I'd encourage the council to look back at that tape and see if that's what your intent was when we basically, in the ordinance, said, you know, we'll have a workshop, we'll bring the Lands and Conservation Commission in, and we'll discuss where, you know, where might be the best land to be set aside. To your point, Ron, we got lucky on Harris Road, I really believe that, it could have been a lot different, it really could have been, but I think when...
It could have been a circular thing around the outside like this one.
Right, right.
Which, you know, if you go around, let's say Rock Ridge was one of those, we have CCLT land behind it, but if you had had a conservation subdivision and it was all the, I mean, out behind Aubrey's houses, all wet, that would have been not, CCLT owns it now, but it wouldn't have been good sub, wouldn't have been good open space to acquire.
Right, but I also wanted to warn you that don't give up the wetlands either, because the wetlands also will absorb a hundred times of their weight in water, and it is a valuable resource as we grow as a community to have wetlands that can absorb the stormwater from the development.
These aren't forever wetlands, these are just bogs, mud bogs that dry up.
Which are valuable.
Yeah, but they dry up.
Which are valuable because of their absorption and their soil capacity, so I, I don't think, wetlands have got a bad rap only because you can't build anything on it, but, but there's a reason you can't build anything on it, and it's a good reason, so it really helps with stormwater downstream. So, to the council, if you could look at that planning board meeting, because that workshop was televised, it was similar to the way our budget workshops are going now when we televise them, it's, it's not a great format for, you know, basically rolling up your sleeves and getting around the table and saying, all right, here's where I'd rather see developed versus here, can we move this around? It was really a, here's our plan and, you know, what do you think? And I, I don't think that was the intent, so just some comments, feedback.
They did the mathematical exercise, I mean, you can see how much of it is slope and how much of...
No, this, this subdivision, I don't think there was any other ideas that really came about, and this one was right on the cusp of us adopting the new rules, and, and it's been around for a long time. We were talking about this over a year ago, Ross Estates, and we finally got this plan to the deeded conservation piece, but I think the intent of the workshop was to basically roll your sleeves up, lay out the map, and have the developer present to both the planning board and the Lands and Conservation Commission of what their thoughts are about the development of this parcel. You give them a huge density bonus by, by basically saying there's no minimum lot size, you basically divide the number of lots by the developable land and say, okay, you need 1.5 acres or what it, whatever it is, there's a huge advantage to a developer because it'll shrink his infrastructure if he can squeeze, squeeze the homes into smaller lots and give up even more open space, and I think that's what we were kinda hoping for, but it hasn't really gone that way yet, so I would just caution the council to keep an eye on that, and those of you who are at there as, as the liaison, just maybe, I'll sit down with Peter and, and, and the team and just say, look, in the future, let's try to look at this in a different way, because when we met with the developer, we kinda laid out that, you know, there's gonna be some give and take, and this may not be the final, the final plan, and the plan was a good plan, so I'm not saying it would have changed any, but it just didn't go the way I thought it was going to go, and I don't know if, if we're not careful, we don't wanna be given something and saying, well, this is what you asked for, when we asked for kind of a give and take meeting and called it a workshop before you even came into a concept plan, so just some feedback, that's all.
So, for others on the council here, do we have any concerns about accepting the gift?
I do not.
Thank you, Mr. Schmitten. I guess I would open it up to the public if there's any questions or comments, I'm getting a look, so I feel like questions coming.
Again, Bruce Sherwin Blanchard wrote, this, I just have a question about the subdivision, is that already going, or is it, is it all built?
Most of it, yeah.
Yeah. The comment I have about it is, to, to, one question, where are we, are we gonna have to pave the dirt part of that because of all this building up there? Does that come up?
It'll, it'll be paved for a portion of Blanchard Road Extension, it will be by the developer.
By the developer?
Yes, and that's why the road up there is getting widened out as well.
And as I've brought up three or four times, Blanchard Road Extension, because of all the development up there, needs serious attention, because of its rural nature and the way it was so quiet for so long, a lot of us, including me and my wife, walked that thing, and it's getting pretty dangerous. People are driving fast, especially delivery trucks, I, I've told this before, I saw a Penske truck, I think he was driving sixty up that thing, he didn't know it ended, I don't think. That road needs attention, I think Orchard Road does too, because there's been a lot of building up there, and that may be where some TIF money ought to go before some other things. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce.
Any other questions or comments from the public on this agenda item? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council. I would happily accept the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll give you a motion. I move to accept the deed of gift for the open space area in the Ross Estate subdivision.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any other questions or comments?
My comment is just, this is kinda messy, but it's our own doing. We required it.
I, I think it's a good thing.
Yeah. Okay. We have a motion, we have a second, I will call for a vote, all those in favor, unanimous, thank you, and thank you, Mr. Schmitten. Okay, moving to the next agenda item, 24-027, to hold a public hearing to consider and act on a mass gathering permit for the Benny Media's ultimate yard sale to be held June 8th and September 7th from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM at the Cumberland Fairgrounds.
So moved.
Yeah. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, I will open it up for public comment, but just let everybody know, this is the ninth year, I think, they've been doing this, so...
Yeah, we've been doing this a while.
Okay, seeing nothing from the public, we have a motion, we have a second, I will call for a vote, all those in favor, unanimous, thank you. Moving to the next item, 24-028, to consider and act on authorizing the town manager to execute a lease agreement with U.S. Bank Equipment Finance for the renewal of a five-year lease of two photocopiers and a map plotter scanner.
Exciting.
It is exciting. Mr. Manager, I know you talked a little bit about, you can enter into leases for things, anything that's less than a year, but if it's longer than a year that requires you to bring it to the council?
That's correct.
Is, this is a renewal of pieces of machinery that we are using quite regularly, right? Probably to print many of the pieces of materials that we're on right now, looking at right now?
So, hey, you have those big maps in your office?
It's where they come from.
Love them.
Magic.
Love them.
Yeah.
But they have reached their, the end of their useful life, and the maintenance is starting to add up, so it is time to give them back, they're all leased, so...
So, this, yeah, they're all leases, and is that the norm right now, just to lease things as opposed to buy them?
Yeah, we, we haven't owned photocopiers for at least fifteen years.
Okay.
Maybe even longer.
Okay.
Is that about the same price as we leased before? Okay.
Yep.
Okay, any questions or comments from the council on this? Any questions or comments from the public on this? Mr. Sherwin.
So, this, this says renewal, does, that mean, is it new equipment, or are we renewing on old equipment?
It'll be brand new, it'll be brand, it'll be brand new equipment.
Right, so it's a new lease, not a renewal?
Same company we've been working with for probably over five years.
But it'll be new leases on new equipment?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so the renewal, that confused me. I can tell you my accounting business again, I don't remember, people are typically not leasing, copying equipment, it, it, it works out better to own them, I'm just asking if that has been looked at, analyzed.
It has.
It has.
It has.
And the lease costs us less?
Cheaper for us to lease it than to own it, because the value is negligible at the end of the five years.
Yeah.
So, it doesn't, there's nothing left of it at the end of five years, in our, in our case, we use, we make a lot of copies.
I just wondered, that's not the case in all cases, it's worth a question.
Absolutely.
Yeah? Okay, I just wondered, it said renewal, I was, wondered if it was new equipment. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Seeing none, I will bring it back to the council, I would happily accept a motion.
I would love to give you this motion, because I'm counting on a map when it's, when you've got the new one. Okay, I move to authorize the town manager to execute a lease agreement with U.S. Bank Equipment Finance for the renewal of a five-year lease of two photocopiers and a map plotter slash scanner.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor, unanimous, thank you. Okay, and the last item on our legislation and policy is agenda item 24-029, to set a public hearing date of April 29th, to consider and act on a liquor license application for the Thirsty Traveler LLC.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion right out of the gate.
Second.
We have a second, right out of the gate.
And it's just to set a public hearing date?
Thank you, yes, correct, that's, that makes sense.
It's not the public hearing, that's what can move us along faster.
Sounds, sounds great, we have a motion, we have a second, is there any, anyone from the public that has an objection to setting a public hearing date on the 29th, our next meeting to discuss this? Seeing none? I would happily accept a motion. I would happily accept a motion.
Motion's been made.
Okay, oh, excuse me, we have a motion in a second, sir. All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Okay, that concludes legislation and policy, we now move to new business, and I will start at my left with Council Cop.
My friend Dean has donated twenty dollars to the food pantry, and I have my twenty dollars, and I need to commend the public works for the outstanding job that they did this last snowstorm. I was out in about, for about forty hours straight, and I actually had to put a chainsaw in all of my trucks to get to where I was going. I spent four and a half hours in Raymond getting a fire truck off a camp road that they drove down into for a CO2 alarm going off, and they could not get back out, because there literally was a dozen trees down, and the road wasn't plowed, and I had to winch the fire truck out, cut trees down, I mean, it was just the perfect storm, and I traveled many, many roads in many different towns, and Cumberland did a far superior job keeping the roads clear to any other town around us, and just kudos to them, I mean, and it's not just because I'm from Cumberland, but they did an outstanding job. If you could have seen the Falmouth Road in Falmouth and Wyndham, it looked like a bomb site, I mean, I literally had to turn around after I cut like six trees down, just trying to get back to my shop, and I finally said, enough of this, I'm going a different way, and I mean, it was, it was just unbelievable, I mean, the devastation of this storm was incredible, and the town public works crew did an outstanding job, so I just, kudos to them, so...
Make sure you know the fire guys were out there with us as well, with chainsaws and moving stuff, so definitely a team effort, and the police department was everywhere trying to help us dispatch so we knew where to go to the next one, and it was a huge team effort, we've got a great team here, we really, really do, they work so well together, and Dan and his crew, how they, how they did it, I don't know, they're, they are snowfighters for sure, and that was snow, ice, rain, everything you could mix in with it too.
Oh, yeah, and that's all I have.
Great, thank you. Council Bill.
All right, I second that, and, and in addition to the display of hospitality here at the town office, too, that was, that was great. Denise mentioned the Lions Club, recently somebody was, had a medical emergency, and the Lions Club is looking to buy a permanent ramp, wheelchair ramp that can be used, an aluminum ramp that can be used for, just not a one-time affair, but, so I'll keep you abreast of that, and...
That's awesome, Bob.
It's, it should be a great asset.
Huge.
So, I've got.
Thank you. Council Philson.
Yes, I just wanted to, couple thank yous, one, the Warming Center, Bill was here for so long, Bill is always here all the time, but I just, I feel like sometimes you're doing a lot of thanking and not everyone's thanking you, and you were tremendous, just kind of the, the warm, positive energy that you were exuding to people for hours and hours, days on end in this case, just thank you, it was such a, it was a really special place to be, and it just, it felt really great, it was wonderful to see so many people, and you were at the center of that, so thank you. I also want to thank Gordon Lichter, who, for his five years of service as chair of the Forestry Subcommittee as part of the LCC, he has stepped down just due to, because he's a busy guy, he's got kids, and his wife is on the school board, but he's done a tremendous job over that five, five-year period, it's, it's losing a friend and just a tremendous worker bee on the LCC, so Gordon, we will miss you. And then finally, this was kind of touched upon earlier, but Councilor Douglas and I are working on onboarding materials and an onboarding handbook that should be ready for the new councilors who will be joining after the June election, so it's no longer like the blind leading the blind, as Mark said, you can explain what FOIA is and all sorts of things without getting, kind of feeling like you're in hot water, so we will make sure that our new councilors who are on-boarded are done so, kind of with materials that they can reference, and I'm sure it'll be a nice big binder that can be printed out with Bill's brand-new leased copier, so that's it for me.
I don't get to take it with me, so it's still the town, so...
That sounds really exciting. Council Serkin.
Yeah, Tig, I'm happy to help out with that, too, if you want another set of eyes on it, or...
I think everything is gonna come to everyone. Just, we were just gonna bang out some stuff this week, but I'll send you the invite.
Yeah, some, the long view might be helpful sometimes as well. Just a couple of things. I want to send condolences to the Chadbourne family. Ted Chadbourne passed away. He was a frequent visitor to Town Hall. He served on many committees. He might have been part of why we set the five-minute rule at one point along the way. But he always had a lot of, a lot of insight and things to share. And so I want to pass on our condolences to his family. I want to thank the Cumberland Fire Department for their Easter Eve response to a gas, gas leak in which residents had to be removed from their homes and they were taken to the fire department. My niece was working, so I got this second-hand information. And I, it was very timely because I had asked Dan if he was still requiring EMTs to also be firefighters. And he said, yes. But on that particular evening, Easter Eve, they couldn't get any combined EMT firefighters. So Hannah was on, she was home from school and she was on. And she's not a firefighter, she's just an EMT. She said, so there I was, standing saying, can't help you with the gas leak, but I can show you where we're taking people, you know? So they had to wait for the fire department to show up. So I, I don't know if he ordered that to illustrate his point or, or what from the week before. But, and then I read online on Facebook, some kudos to the fire department for how well they handled that, and as I knew they would. So I just want to thank them. And then tomorrow, I mean, we talked about Passover earlier, but tomorrow is the last day of Ramadan. So I'd like to wish Eid Mubarak to all of our Muslim friends and citizens in Cumberland. My nephew is Muslim, and I know he's looking forward to the end of his fast. And that's all I have.
That's great, thank you. No new business on my end, apart from just reminding people that we do have another budget workshop. This will be the second to last one, I believe, correct? Until it's basically presented on the 13th. So this will effectively be our last budget workshop. It's from 5:00 to 6:30 on the 29th. And then on May 13th, the town manager will actually present the budget presentation and bus, budget adoption. So with that, please.
Bill, can you just remind people the hours of the brush dump? Because everybody like me probably has mountains of brush in their doyad, so.
Is that a yes? You can do that?
If the gates are open, come on in.
Okay, alright.
Because we, we're bringing, we're hauling in brush from all over the town as well. So we're trying to have extended hours right now for the next few weeks. We will be open on Saturdays. I'm not sure they're into extended hours on Saturdays yet. But Monday through Friday, if the gates are open, come on in. Because we'll be in and out of there. We'll have staffing when, when we can. And we don't have guys just cutting trees up and bringing them down, so. It's a lot of wood.
Perhaps if people have had some hardwoods fall down, like whole hardwood trees, they might give a call to, what's Bruce? Bruce Wilds? Does he do the wood bank?
I, I, he did. I'm not sure if he's doing it anymore.
He is to, or he'd be able to send you in the right direction. I know the wood bank does a lot with the hardwoods, so. If you have a tree, you might look to Bruce as a resource.
Okay. I would happily accept the motion to adjourn. I move to adjourn. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Cop and Filson? All those in favor? Unanimous. Let's go watch some basketball. Thank you, everyone.